Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to begin this evening's board meeting. Our order of business is the school board meeting of September 24th, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:02. And at this time, we requested all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from flash photography, except during when these wonderful students are up here, presentations. The agenda can also be found in the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the Leadership tab and choose School Board. At this time, I am going to mention Ms. Patrica, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Ms. Patrica will be participating via phone this evening's meeting pursuant to Board Policy 1.11. She is out of town due to business commitments for the board and will be able to vote. Ms. Patrica is in Washington, DC, representing us there with the Florida School Board Association's Federal Issues and Advocacy Conference. Hope the conference is going well. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision, which is to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we've been enjoying the 23 Voice Group TAG, the A- oh, sorry, there's a space there, the acapella group from Cypress Lake Center of the Arts, under the direction of Gary Stroh. The group, which is, which was founded in 2003, is recognized as one of the elite groups in the nation. TAG has released 11 full-length studio albums, and guess what I got? Thank you, guys. Their most recent album, 11:11, was honored with Contemporary Acappella Recording Awards, CARA, for the Best High School Album and the Best Scholastic Original Song. Overall, their albums have received eight CARA Awards and 40 nominations, holding the record for the most nominations for any high school group. I can pause and you can clap. They have earned an appearance at the International Championship of High School Acappella Finals in New York City three times, and placing third in 2007 and fourth in 2016. In April of 2018, the group won the High School Championship at the National Acappella Convention in Memphis, besting 10 groups from around the country. Their 12th studio album, Reality Lately, will be released in October. I can't wait. The group is really excited about accepting an invitation to be the featured group at the International Acappella Festival in Milan, Italy. Can I go? I'll chaperone. Me too. At this time, TAG will perform one more song. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll take a brief pause. We don't want you to leave, but we've got to get on with the meeting, so. Okay, thank you. The approval of the agenda, this evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include six items in executive services, two in academic services, two in business services, seven in human resources, as well as three items under operations. One item under attorney recommendations, which is good cause. Mr. Gabriel, please provide an explanation for that item.
Yes, Madam Chairman, board members. At your Friday meeting on September 20th, the workshop meeting, the board consented to bring forward this RSM statement of work number two, an increase of expenditures for approval as a good cause item for this evening's action meeting.
As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. And we have four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Giovinelli and Ms. Fisher, please record your vote.
She voted in for approval.
Okay, all right. Is she voting electronically? Thank you. Okay. Vote passes 7-0. Ms. Giovinelli will deliver the invocation. Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Father, bless us all as we gather here together this evening and as we begin the evening as our, as our governance team. May we be open to other ideas and beliefs, respectful and accepting of all differences, and be patient kind as we talk. It matters that, it matters what leaders do or don't do. The culture of any organization is shaped by the behavior of the leader's will to tolerate. Working together, we find a common ground enable us to move forward with a shared, with a shared repurpose, our students and staff. May we see what is truly important and unite us and focus on that. As we meet here today to serve our community, help us to use our resources wisely and well, to respect all members of the community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Please welcome Master Sergeant, retired Steve Went, Army Instructor of JROTC Program at South Fort Myers High School, who will introduce the cadet presenting the colors this evening. Master Sergeant Went retired after 23 years of active-duty service and is a veteran of Afghanistan and has served in Korea, Kuwait, and Germany, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Colonel Melanie Lara, Brigade Commander of the Wolfpack Academy Junior ROTC Program. Cadet Lara is a senior at South Fort Myers High School who has achieved a GPA of 3.66. She has been actively involved in the JROTC program over the past four years, filling numerous key leadership positions prior to being selected as the brigade commander. In her senior year, she commands the junior marksmanship team and cyber patriot team. Melanie plans to attend the University of Tampa where she will major in cybersecurity, computer animation, and psychology. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Gabriel, please address the agenda item, public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on the meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition, clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding quorum shall be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. Time per speaker, Madam Chair, is two minutes. We have 20 cards.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. With 20, that would be three minutes. I don't know if there's any others who...
Okay. Is there anyone on my left that has not turned in a card that would like to speak? Anyone on my right? Do you have one more, 21? Does that take us over?
That takes us over.
That takes us to two, to two minutes.
That would be two minutes per speaker.
And as well as you, as you approach the podium, please state your name clearly, and when you're finished, then you can fill out a card to leave it there. We offer the opportunity to those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment process to raise their hands and provide their names. We did that. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff to follow up. So make sure that you complete a blue card before we're done. I think that's it. We are ready to go.
So I'm going to call your name, and when your name is called, if you would, please come to the podium, and I apologize in advance for the names and how I mispronounced them.
Dr. Atkins, my name's Timmy Fisher. The position of school principal is extremely and vitally important to the create and instill a safe and nurturing and positive environment for our children's education. As individuals, parents, and taxpayers, we want school administrators to be men and women with honor and integrity. I have known Dana Barry since May of 1995, and I am here to say, in my 53 years of life, there is not a lot of men and women who have come across my radar that have more honor and integrity than Dana Barry. We are both employees of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and toward the end of our careers, I was Dana's supervisor. I witnessed his genuine love and concern for his sphere of influence on a daily basis. Recently, I was telephoned in Pennsylvania by Lee County School District Chief of Human Resources, Dr. Angela Pruitt, who questioned me and shared that currently there are some individuals who have used two incidents with Deputy Dana Barry was involved in a disparaging manner in an attempt to negatively affect Dana's reputation and his future. I do not know who this woman is and her motive, but I would like to set the record straight. I was the supervisor, and I was present at both those incidents. Those incidents did not and were not portrayed properly. It was also confirmed by retired Sheriff Michael Scott, who said of Deputy Dana Barry that he was a rock star, making reference to his outstanding performance. Dana was a deputy, and as that deputy was the consummate professional, as he has been for the Lee County School District. I could talk for days in nothing but positive stories and examples of Dana Barry going over and above, regardless of his time or schedule, to help nurture and encourage and educate others. And for those who truly know me, that's a factual statement. I could talk for days. That being the case, the issue of challenging or slandering a man or woman's good reputation or their honor and integrity without basis or out of context is something that is very important to me, to the point that I am here addressing in an attempt to prevent a character assassination, instead of being in the state of Pennsylvania with my loving and supportive wife on our 30th wedding anniversary. Thank you.
Sorry, there is no clapping during the meeting, please. Thank you. You can silently clap inside.
Hitten? Courtney Hitten? I told you. Sorry.
My name is Courtney Hitten, and I am honored to be the girls' PE teacher at Challenger Middle School. First, I want to thank each and every one of you. You're sitting up there as a member of the Lee County School Board because you have pledged enough to do what's best for our school and our district. You've promised to support our staff, our teachers, and our students while keeping our best interests in mind. I'm currently in my 21st year of teaching. How many teachers do you know can say they love their job after 21 years? I can. I can honestly say I love my job. I haven't always. I've worked under other administrators where I've tolerated my job and respected my job, but at Challenger Middle School, I absolutely love my job. Why? Because I respect and admire my administration. Good administration equals happy teachers, which equals students that are willing to learn and do their best. I could spend hours telling you stories about Dana Barry, one including when he literally took the cake cutter out of my hand during the National Junior Honor Society Convention, which my children were being inducted, and said, "Go be a parent. You're not a teacher right now. Go be a parent." I'd like to invite all of you to come to Challenger and meet our staff and join our school. And Ms. Vaughn, thank you for coming and joining me. I'm glad that you came to speak time, to spend time with our school. And hopefully, you now know the truth. I could speak all day long, but I truly do love my job. We're here to support Dana Barry as principal of Challenger Middle School. Of course, we're sad to see Terry Kennedy leave.
30 seconds.
She's built Challenger to greatness, and it's not just a school, it's a family. So there's one question we could ask. Why Dana Barry over every other applicant? He's already a charger. He's already proven to us that we need him and we love him and we adore him. So thank you again for sitting up there. You were voted in by the teachers and the community members, and we trusted you to uphold your oath and to do what's best for our schools. And what's best for our school is Dana Barry as our principal.
Thank you. Rosemary McBride?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary McBride. I'd like to begin by offering my congratulations to Dr. Atkins for being awarded the Lee County NAACP Educational Leadership Award. Not only do such accolades reflect well on Dr. Atkins, but on the entire governance team and indeed the entire Lee County School District. And I just would like to share with you a little food for thought this evening. This is a quote from Dr. Maya Angelou. She said, "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Thank you.
Jana Finkley?
Good evening, Superintendent Atkins, board members. It is a privilege for me to be present this evening in support of Mr. Dana Barry. I have known Mr. Barry since the 2012-2013 school year. We were both a part of the original staff that opened Harms We were both a part of the original staff that opened Harnsmarsh Middle School. We worked together until his reassignment to Assistant Principal at Challenger Middle. So I have had a front row seat to his evolution from a Project Lead the Way teacher to a very passionate administrator. The students, staff, and parents at Challenger Middle are very lucky to have him lead that school. And given the opportunity and the proper conditions, I would go to work under his leadership in a heartbeat. Thank you.
Kelly Leidig?
My name is Kelly Leidig. I'm a seventh grade ELA and reading teacher at Challenger Middle. I have known Dana Barry for over three years. He was an assistant principal my first two years at Harnsmarsh Middle. He offered more support to me as a new teacher than anyone else in the building. When I decided it was time to look for a job closer to home, I knew my first choice was Challenger Middle because Dana was there. He's already been in my room participating in class discussions and offering support with classroom challenges. His priority is always the student's emotional well-being and learning environment. I cannot think of a better person to take over Challenger and continue the legacy created by Terry Kennedy. Thank you.
Erica Sheer?
My name is Erica Sheer. I am here tonight to show my support for Mr. Barry's appointment of principal. Having had personal interactions with Mr. Barry throughout my daughter's sixth and now seventh grade year, I feel Mr. Barry can provide the leadership that's required as a principal. He encourages the parents to be involved. He boosts student morale. He shows up to PTO meetings and literally says, "How can I help? What can I do?" I had to seek assistance from Mr. Barry because my daughter had an issue in a class, and he was fair and thorough and made sure all parties were heard. And the resolution was perfection for both the parents, the students, and the teacher. I'm a working mom of three. Me taking the time to come here and speak on his behalf is big. This two hours out of my time, it's a lot. But he's worth every bit of that because he shows us that every single day. Thank you for your time.
Rena White?
DeeDee and I have been science teachers thirty-two years, thirty-four years, and we've always taught in middle school. And we've worked with a lot of assistant principals. And Dana stands out as one of the best, besides Terry, because we follow Terry everywhere. All right. And although he's been at Challenger for one year, he has successfully implemented new policies, demonstrated many qualities of a leader, and has great rapport with the students. Three imperative skills required of a principal. Dana has formalized the process of how we can understand and utilize our effect size using Haiti's research along with our state and district tests that we have. This helps us understand and improved our impact on the students. He has also modified classroom walkthroughs that are more productive and effective and not as intimidating. Dana truly cares about the people he is leading. On multiple occasions, he has popped into our classrooms. Yeah, we're scared to death, and yet he starts sharing stories with the students about, you know, when he flies an airplane and what the atmosphere is like, and compliments us in front of the students. And we're like, this has never happened before. You know, we're like, wow.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So when he, one of the things I want to point out too is that when he presents new ideas or techniques at staff meetings, he models the changes he expects. He has a wonderful attitude, greets everyone with big hellos and smiles, kind of reminds me of Dr. De Shazo. He has a wonderful attitude greeting everyone. I'm sorry, lost my place. He even took the time to send DeeDee and I an email one day about complimenting our hands-on approach to science. And we've been teaching so long...
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Okay, Bethany Saronsk?
I would first like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about my support for Dana Barry as Principal of Challenger Middle. My name is Bethany Sarosinski, and I am a six-year reading and language arts teacher at Challenger Middle. Challenger is the only place I've ever taught. It has been my family for the last six years, and that is exactly what I know it will continue to be with Mr. Barry as principal. He puts such a strong emphasis on supporting one another, listening to others, and working to make Challenger a place that all students and staff look forward to coming to every day. Okay, sorry. Mr. Barry often challenges his teachers with the question, "Are you doing what is best for your children today?" So I would like to ask you the same question. Is the decision that you are making what is best for the children that attend Challenger? These incredible young men and women have the same struggles as any other young adult growing up in this world. But thanks to our amazing administrative team, which includes Mr. Barry, our students are celebrated for their victories, they're loved through their poor choices, and they are given a fresh start each time they step foot through the front doors because, like I said, Challenger's family. And in our family, we support those who support us. And Mr. Barry has done nothing but support his students and staff. He's given us opportunities to learn and to grow. He deserves the same opportunity to learn and to grow as Principal of Challenger Middle School. Thank you.
Tracy Simica?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Dana Barry for Challenger Middle School Principal. My name is Tracy Simica, and I am an intensive reading teacher and the Reading Department Chair at Challenger Middle. Mr. Barry is the right person to lead and maintain the consistency and excellence that is Challenger's reputation. He makes it a priority to build relationships with the faculty, staff, students, and parents, and works hard to model integrity and professionalism every day. His passion and dedication is infectious and creates an environment of positivity on campus. Challenger's best opportunity to maintain the A-rating that it has earned nearly every year since the opening is with Mr. Barry leading as principal. He has made the effort to understand the special culture of the school and can continue and expand upon the policies, procedures, and remarkable work happening at Challenger with significant faculty and staff support. Thank you.
Lauren Joshua?
My name is Lauren Joshua, and I'm here to support Dana Barry. I have worked for Mr. Barry for two months. I was hesitant about speaking tonight because I haven't worked for Mr. Barry that long, and I didn't know how to justify my feelings about him as our next principal because I really can't compare two months of working with him to the school years that many others have had with Mr. Barry. I made my decision the other night while at dinner with my husband. I asked for advice. I asked what he would do. My husband asked me, "How is he compared to the other principals you have worked for?" He continued with, "If there is something about him that your school needs, your students needs, your students need, your staff needs, then consider speaking for him." That is why I'm here tonight. I have worked with some of the best principals in Lee County, all of which who have helped me get to where I am today as the reading coach for Challenger. One principal in particular has always stood out to me. Every year, I think back to a time where this person taught me something I still use today. Many of you may know Denise Carlin. She was the first principal I worked for at Pinewood Elementary. I learned the most from her, the best from her, and accomplished many goals because of her. Denise has always been the principal that in my mind is like no other. But one thing I can say about tonight is, I get to work for another Denise Carlin. Mr. Barry is Denise Carlin, but...
Thirty seconds.
Just man, sorry. I finally get to work for someone who is like no other. Mr. Barry is the principal I've been waiting to work for for seven years. I wanted to express how highly I think of Mr. Barry, and I think you know, if you know Denise Carlin, I am comparing him to someone who is certainly exceptional. Thank you.
Adrian Burke?
Hello, my name is Adrian Burke, and I am part of the Fort Myers Greater Lee County Relay for Life. I am here today to ask more schools to... interest in our relay. Our Relay for Life is an event that raises money for cancer research. Teams line the track and walk in support. In first grade, my kindergarten teacher, Ms. Mock, fought her cancer twice, and now she is a cancer survivor. My great-grandma has been fighting cancer since I was five months old. I am now almost eleven. Everyone in this room and around Lee County will know someone who has had cancer in their lifetime. With all of, with all the violence and everything happening, this is a positive event for cancer research.
Thirty seconds.
Did you know every day a school bus full of kids gets cancer, gets diagnosed? And every year, three hundred and sixty-five busloads of kids gets cancer? That is fifteen thousand, six hundred, ninety-five kids a year. That's just...
Carla Fox?
Carla Fox, it's wonderful to follow so many good and wonderful things happening in our district. The singers we had earlier, the teachers who are so much in support of their administrators. We have our young students coming to talk to the board about all those good things that we are in support of, and that is one of the things that I want us and the board to be able to share in a broader fashion. What I wanted to do tonight was talk to you and give you some facts because I know that you all are going to be armed to the teeth for your legislative agenda, but I wanted to give you a few facts that I know of that I'm not sure if you know because I'm not sure of where all your information comes from, so I thought I'd share a few things. First off, did you know that Florida is ranked forty-third in the nation in per-student expenditures? While we are in per-person capita, we are about thirty-seventh. If we were to increase our spending by two-point-two billion, pardon me, two-point-four billion dollars, that would only raise us in ranking four places among the states, not even coming up to the average of where we rank per capita.
Thirty seconds.
Florida ranks forty-sixth in the nation in teacher pay. We have, base student allocation has increased just two-point-eight percent since the 2007-2008 school year, and the average cost of living has increased twenty-one-point-seven percent in that same time. These are all things that if we take to our legislators, we might get them to listen. Thank you.
Jude Paul?
Everybody, my name is Jude Paul. I am a teacher, business education teacher at Challenger Middle School. My story is a little bit more unique than my fellow colleagues. And first of all, if I cry, I'm never going to forgive Mr. Barry ever. So I'm going to hold it together. All right, so I left a six-figure job to come work here in the school district. Why? I have no idea. Ask my wife. But I do it because not only do I love the kids, but I love Mr. Barry as well. There's four men in my life that have told me they love me. Mr. Barry is one of the four. So I can tell you that he's truly passionate about education. He's passionate about his teachers. He's passionate about education. He's passionate about data, which would bore you to death, and then Challenger teachers will tell you. But that data that we use is to better the lives of the kids that we're impacting each and every day. And I wouldn't be here on my time. I count my time daily, and my time is precious, but I'm only doing it because I truly feel that Mr. Barry would make an impact as the principal at Challenger Middle School. There's nothing really else I can say, but if you want somebody that's going to do a great job, that's going to fall in the footsteps that Ms. Kennedy has done at Challenger Middle School, Mr. Barry is definitely it, and I did not cry, and I'm thankful. God bless.
Lisa Soto?
What you don't know about me is that I am the tears of the school. I don't have a speech because I speak from the heart. When I came here from Miami-Dade County six years ago, I applied to twelve schools, and all twelve schools wanted me. Yay! So I was very selective, and I chose to work for Terry Kennedy because she really, she She, I saw in her that she cares about family and that she makes the school a family, like you really, like you feel like that's your sister and your brother and your uncle and your dad, and you feel it. You really feel it at Challenger. So when Mr. Barry came, and you know, I almost flipped over when I heard she was leaving, I was okay. I actually didn't cry, well, I did cry that she's leaving, but I didn't cry that he was taking over because he is like Terry 2.0. No offense, Terry. And, and you know, I'm just going to throw words at you before you say thirty seconds: compassion, heart, love, dedication, humanity. I teach ESC separate classroom, and it's been a challenging year at Challenger Middle with our department. And he cares so much. He's in there knee-deep, and he, he's all about our safety and the safety of our children. And his day starts at one in the morning, because that's when I get an email, and it ends like at midnight, so he doesn't sleep. He's all about Challenger. I'm not a comedian. I just want to let it out. So please, thank you for taking him into consideration. He really truly is a charger, as we heard at the beginning, and this is why we're all doing happy hands for him because he deserves it one-hundred percent. Thank you.
Kira Perez?
Hi, I'm Kira Perez, and I'm speaking as a private citizen on behalf of my sister Gabriela Perez. I'd first like to address comments made at the board meeting on August 27th by Chris Patrika's aunt in regards to my sister's mistrial motion. A certain juror felt intimidated by a man out of the gallery, who I would describe as a dark-skinned Hispanic man. I was present at the courtroom for two days, and I witnessed no threats or evidence of the claims asserted by the Henderson firm and Brian Williams, who both represent the Lee County School District, and I believe they lied on behalf of the school board. I was there when the district team or the... I was there when the district team, or the legal's district team laughed to themselves when a witness described my mother as protective and concerned. I was there when the school district asserted ableist claims that my sister's disability was not serious because she attended bra, participated in sports and was overall successful after leaving the school district. I was there when Linda Berry, the principal of Lexington Middle, when my sister attended, said the words, "Well, some children are annoying," when she was up there testifying, which I'm sure every child wants their principal to say about children. I was there when the district's legal team desperately tried to justify my sister being assaulted and to accuse her of being mean-spirited. I was there when the district attempted to downplay the assault my sister experienced by giving her bully, who was convicted of battery and was put under restraining order, in a video testimony stating he did nothing wrong, and my sister experienced a severe swelling attack in the courtroom. The complaint and lawsuit are not frivolous, frivolous in any way. If it was my sister, the bully, if it was, the bully would have not been convicted. The principal, Linda Berry, would have not been reprimanded by the Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights for the wrongs that she did to my sister, and as of today, no one has held Linda Berry accountable. I'm putting in record the last reprimand that this Office of Civil Rights has given to the school board and Brian Williams' contract that he makes $170,000 from you guys.
Jaclyn Perez.
Good evening, Board. I was on the phone with Pete Bohatch the night before he resigned, begging him to please stay. He has been so instrumental in helping me with bullying cases, 504s, IEPs, and employees being mistreated and so many other things. So I'm compelled tonight to read to you private messages that Pete Bohatch shared with me that evening, and this is from his quotes that I have. "I always taught my girls to do what's right. I plan on doing what's right. Hopefully, things will change for kids in Lee County. I am just tired of fighting. My leaving may send a message about all that is wrong in this school district. I can't continue to work under this leadership. I have to look at myself every day and I can't do this anymore. And nothing will change until change occurs at the top." I'd like you to know that Spiro and Simmons agreed with my plans for the cheerleading, but Atkins said no, only to appease Morgan and Patrica. School Board Member Three, and this, these are my comments. School Board Member Three has not only targeted Reese Hall, but she's also targeted my child with malicious lies. I want to remind this board that you entered into an NAACP resolution agreement and that OCR complaint also has my child's name in it, so you have three federal OCR complaints that have been acknowledged by the federal government with my daughter's name on it. Chris Patrica needs to stop calling her a liar. I'm also entering it on another topic.
Thirty seconds.
I received a letter from Susan Pritchett with bills from DJJ stating that we have made cleaning, um, bills there from our air quality company. $4,000, $3,000, $3,000, $3,000, $9,000, $3,000, $3,000, $3,000, $3,000, $3,000, $3,000. The pages are endless of thousands of dollars, and guess what? We don't own a building there. We don't even have employees that clean there. So how did this get billed to the school district?
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, the time. Ma'am, your time is over. Remy Hall.
Good evening. It's easy to refer to parents that have complaints or concerns as difficult or problem parents. Dr. Atkins, I believe you owe me an apology. And Board, I believe Dr. Atkins is paid enough to deal with difficult situations. He is. He just refused to. Over $18,000 has been spent to investigate cheerleading, which he said was not a concern or was not a problem, yet Friday, the boardroom was filled with every high school principal. That is odd, that that many would come out for something that is not a problem. And watching the proposal that Mr. Burnside made, which I thought there were some great suggestions made Friday, I really did. I thought the team put a lot of work into it. Wasn't Mr. Bohatch's proposal? That one didn't fly. Dr. Atkins didn't like that one. I thought Bohatch's was better, Dr. Bohatch's was better. Um, I find it interesting that Mr. Burnside is the principal at Dumbbar High School, where Board Member from District Three serves as president of the Athletic Booster Club. I see that as a weird coincidence. District Board Member Three has made over 15 derogatory comments about cheerleading in board meetings. She said it's not a board issue, yet I believe she gave Atkins, Dr. Atkins, a directive not to handle it, and I believe she planned the panel and the presentation that you received on Friday.
Thirty seconds.
It is a problem. It is a problem. I don't know Mr. Berry, but I think it's weird that I'm sitting here to find out that he's married to somebody that was involved in the Perez trial. That's a weird coincidence. I think it's time tonight to call for an investigation into Dr. Atkins and his spending. $18,000, another federal complaint looming, and now you have a Title IX athletic violation.
Kelly Nolan.
Hi, I'm Kelly Nolan. I was here two weeks ago, um, asking for help for the speeders and the traffic, uh, in Pine Glen near the Three Oaks Elementary School. I wanna thank you because I've received two calls, one from Mr. Partif and one from Mr. Savage, saying that they're working on it. They went out the next day or two days later to evaluate and, uh, you have solutions being placed, um, put in place, I guess, even for temporary, um, until something better comes along. But to be listened to and for you to hear what I was trying to tell you, I appreciate that. And for my community, I wanna say thank you.
Susan Candelupo.
I'm a private citizen and I'm a mother here for the first time, and I just heard a dozen people talking about that. Great, but I don't wanna be stopped at two minutes. I have a serious issue and I had to listen to all of that and that took up very valuable time for those of us who had other issues, so please grant me your ears for the first time. And I'll try to read as quickly as possible.
Excuse me, I, I do have to inform you that by our bylaws, we only give a certain amount based on the number of people, so...
But you're all on one subject, so it doesn't give...
It's per person.
Well, can I suggest that we will start the clock at 2:00, as soon as I'm finished speaking with you? And if you have further information that you don't get finished, you can either leave copies or contact us and we will definitely get back in touch with you regarding...
I can't get anyone to talk to me on the phone.
I, I will give you my...
I can't contact anyone.
After the meeting, please, I will give you my card after the meeting and I will call you.
You ready to start again?
Yes, please.
Give me, give me... Okay, so my son is, um, very high-functioning and autism. Um, I have, he has been in the school system since pre-K and, um, I have spent hours and hours on end in IEPs that I no longer believe in. I have pled to guidance counselors, teachers, behavior specialists and principals to take notice of my son, for he does have special needs that are different from others. Although he is high-functioning, there is no place in the school system for him. He is not so low-functioning that he needs to remain in isolated special needs classrooms, but now that the rest of the students are all-inclusive with higher-functioning special needs kids, he is flying, he has been flying dangerously under the radar and is treated like another student ID number. I've had numerous meetings with the school system, unable to reach my ultimate goal of the superintendent, this time regarding certain aspects of the code of conduct that are not followed to a T by students, teachers, administration, and ultimately the principals themselves. Things have gotten so out of hand at the high school level that I have had to remove my son from the Lee County school system and for many reasons, had to place him in a different county, in a diff, with a different set of kids and a different set of teachers. I am heartbroken. We have Chromebooks entertaining our kids with YouTube and video games instead of teachers giving kids meaningful classroom tasks to complete during their downtime. No longer are they encouraged to write in script or even write at all. The cameras on the Chromebooks have been disabled so that they cannot take a picture of the smartboard, um, if, if absolutely necessary. Um, okay, and there is a perverse sense of entitlement we are allowing these kids to have by letting them not only bring their cellphones to school, but to let them use them in class. Now kids like my son, who are electronically addicted, are not held accountable, and I think accountability has to be taken across the board and that we have to get back to old-fashioned...
Thank you, ma'am.
I understand the importance of...
Your time is up.
...they have no place in the class. I'm sorry, ma'am. We have to stop you at this point, but we...
And I appreciate you, Mary Fisher, who has not done a damn thing for me either.
Ma'am.
None of you have done a damn thing, and I stand out in Hillsborough County.
Don't wanna have to ask you to leave.
Floundering in the school system, and you all should be ashamed! You know, I wanted to change me an ally! Reform the school system!
Mayo. Kathy Mayo. Ready?
Not everything works the way we want it to. Selecting the right person for a position is one of the most important responsibilities of any organization, especially a government organization like this school system. I spent 38 years working for different government agencies and I learned just how important it is to take my time and hire or promote the right person. I mention this because there are serious questions concerning the hiring practices of the district. We have heard about a man who, um, is obviously doing the right thing for his school, but are we doing the right hiring? Are we doing, are we following our own practices and policies? There's a policy about putting, uh, potential principals on a, a list, um, to be assessed, to be, and, you know, it's just not open to the world. Well, apparently, um, this man was not on the list and yet has been moved to the top. Um, I, I just suggest that it's time to maybe relook at the policies and practices for your human resources in terms of hiring and promotions. Um, you want them to be as fair and open as possible. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the last card that I have. There was another person I thought?
The other lady, could it's there?
Come on up.
Please state your name at the, at the, uh, desk, please.
Ready?
Carmen Oliveras. Um, I am a mother of a special needs child at Fort Myers High. He is an ESC, he has an IEP. I was supposed to be going to a meeting there. The safety in the schools, as we all know it, is very poorly. Down here, I just moved from Orlando and it sucks because I went into that school, there was nobody there that knew anything about what was going on. They took me into the school, into two different classrooms, and nobody, nobody, not even when I was leaving, asked me for an ID. So I could've been anybody walking into that school. I could've shot up the school, I could've kidnapped somebody, I could've hurt anybody. Nobody asked me for an ID. So when I went to go and try to, um, report it, Superintendent was too busy. I don't even know who he is. Mrs. Carol Wookiee, whatever her name is, didn't help me. The school principal, "What would you like me to do, ma'am? Um, how about your job and put some security into that school?" My son was put there because apparently there's no space in Cypress Lake High where my son is supposed to be at, where I'm zoned for my son to go to. I did put in a waiver, I did want my son changed and transferred, but as of today, this happened last week, as of today, nobody has contacted me.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds can go really fast. Well, um, my concern is the fact that there is no security in that school at all. So like I said, I could've been anybody going into that school, and especially for a special needs child, I don't know what you guys are doing with all this, all this stuff, but I think the security for our children is more important. So there's my 30 seconds or two minutes or whatever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
Thank you, yes.
Did you make sure you filled out a card, please? Okay, so that we can get in touch with you. And I'm sorry, please state your name once more for me.
My?
Yes.
Carmen Oliveras.
Okay. Um, Ms. Oliveras, I'm, uh, I'm sorry that you had to, um, experience that, but I'm glad that at least you are taking the time and the responsibility to report it so that we can make sure that it doesn't continue to happen. Superintendent...
It never happens.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I can't talk back and forth with you. Superintendent, would you like to address the security and, uh, how we would handle that?
I can get with, uh, Ms. Wookiee and report back to the board.
Okay.
I know the whole story.
Oh, so it's Crystal Burnside, right?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am.
Ma'am, you don't, you don't have a chance to talk anymore.
All right, thank you.
You can listen.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a seat.
Thank you for coming, and please leave your card and we will get someone back in touch with you, okay? Thank you. Ms. Mayo, thank you for your comments. I will have more to say about that in just a little bit. Um, I think Susan is, has left. I do have to say that, um, those of us that are parents do understand that, uh, as parents, we want to protect and to take care of our children, and I think we all understand the fervency that parents do have. Sometimes they, we just need help and answers, so we'll make sure that we do get in touch with her. Um, Ms. Nolan, a happy one. Thank you. Okay. You got an answer, yeah! All right. I'm glad that you had your, uh, question answered. Um, Ms. Hall, um, regarding the cheerleading, we did have a, a briefing, uh, last Friday in which we were given the beginnings of a plan for cheerleading. And I know some people, you know, talk about that again, and talk about parents and how we want the best for our children and, um, tell them we're more passionate than others. And we are working on a policy that the, the one that was presented to us on Friday was just the beginnings of a plan, and we all realize we do need some consistency. We have a very transient, um, group of students in our county, and so if one student goes from one school to the other, they should be able to experience the same, at least, standards and rules. So we are, uh, desperately working on that and, um, we will miss Mr. Bohatch. Um, he actually, he hired me into the district in 2003, so we're sad to see him leave. Uh, thank you for sharing his sentiments and, um, the issues that he was working on will continue to be brought to the forefront. And like I said, we, we do public comment because we do need to and want to hear what the public, who as someone earlier said, put us up here. We're not, we didn't just wake up one morning and decide, "You know what? I'm gonna go sit in that big black chair." No. Uh, you all put us here, so we need to hear what it is that you have to say so that we can govern ourselves accordingly. can govern ourselves accordingly. Kara, are you still here, Ms. Perez?
I'm here.
No, 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 Kara Perez. I just wanted to say to her thank you for speaking on behalf of her sister and sharing her facts and feelings with us. I believe that is still somewhat a case that's going on, so we really cannot discuss anything about that.
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Fox, thank you for the information. We will be having, where's she? She's still here? Oh, there she is, over there. There is, I believe on October 30th or 31st, the legislative meeting. I'm sure you have that date, that would be a good place to attend and if you have an opportunity to speak on behalf of the things that you mentioned tonight. Thank you for your dedication and following that data and helping us out with that. And also on that measure, everyone needs to speak to the legislators. If we're the only ones, or our lobbyists are the only ones saying we need this, we need that, it's not as powerful as what will come from the masses. The masses can change things. You vote. And you have to remind us as elected officials and all of the others that have something to do with your livelihood, that we work for you. And we will try to do as much as we can to help you understand where our hands are tied and where you can help us as well. Now, my friend Adam. Adam, since you're short, would you stand up, please? Mr. Burke?
Adrian.
Adrian, I'm sorry. Adrian, please stand up. Now, I am proud to have Adrian stand up because I taught, his mother was one of my students at Lee High Senior. So yes, I'm getting old, but anyway. When I was called a couple of weeks ago that Adrian worked with Relay for Life, and he said, "We've gotta get people to get involved, we've gotta get more schools involved." And it was his idea to come and to say to all of the different schools to come and join them. Thank you, Adrian. And I have
Ask him when the date's.
Oh, okay, when is the date, Adrian?
March 28th.
Okay, March 28th, and I'm sure you'll be back before then. And on another note to Adrian, I had a friend, a teacher for twenty years in Lee County School System, a wife and a mother, and she lost her battle to cancer, in fact, about an hour ago. So thank you for what you're doing. Go out and walk for somebody in Relay for Life. And go home and hug someone, because life is short. Let's see, Ms. McBride, you always give us something wonderful to remember, and Maya Angela is one of my favorites, so we appreciate that. And I will never forget how your quotes make me feel. Okay, now we get to Mr. Berry. I personally want to say, I think there's a misconception out there, that there's an us and them. There's not an us and them in this room. We are all Lee County School District. We all want what's best for children. And my comment is personally from me, you will hear from the other members as they get an opportunity to speak, but my decision about how I feel about this situation has nothing whatsoever to do with an individual person. What it's about is equity, fairness, and the opportunity to give faith to our employees that follow the processes and the procedures and go through sacrifices of doing everything that they have to do, and to give everyone the same opportunity. There have been other schools that have filled this room before and said, you know, "Please hire so-and-so." And in some of those situations, they were told that the person did not fulfill the requirements of being in the pool. So it can go both ways, but all I'm asking for, and I'm asking the board and everyone here, to be equitable, to be fair, and to give everyone an opportunity. I've always been about equity and fairness and that I sit in this seat to speak for the marginalized. The marginalized look like all of us in this room, but many times they're not able to speak for themselves. And I am going to say, on behalf of fairness and equity, those that couldn't get up at the mic and speak for themselves are those that are in the principal pool, and I will name a few. Wayne Alexander, Cheryl Allison, Bertie Alvarez, Michael Amabile, Kimberly Backs, Carol Wookiee, Kevin Beckman, Linda Berry, Kenneth Best, Andrew Bigger, Karen Blaze, Darcia Burrell, Linda Boyle, James Buchanan, some of them are off now, they've got positions. Anika Carter, Mason Clark, Lita Smith, Jill Dorsett, John Drake, Julie Dotco, Alex Dorzansky, Trent Eckert, Stephen Ellie, Eli, Elizabeth Eliseano, Denise Fitzpatrick, Tamara Forky, Mary Beth Gretzky, Dara Grautke, Andrew Hamstra, Dr. Hudzina, Marty Iavine, Dr. Iavine, Ryan Jackson, Jamie Kirshner, Shelley Kepler, Terry Kinsey, Jason Kurtz, Tammy Lee Master, Joy Marks, Tamika Massey, Holly Matthews, Matthew Miller, Kim Molen, Beth Ober, Charles Peace, Richard Purdue, John Peters, Mitchell Player, Brian Palet, Pamela Rader, Jamie Reed, Michelle Robinson, John Rozell, Donna Schroll, Catherine Scoville, Forest Walker, Roberta White, and Emma Winfield. I speak for them when I say we have to be fair, we have to be equitable. I was really disheartened when I heard that the principal pool was opened for four days just to accommodate placing someone in the pool. To me, that is not fair and equitable. What could have happened is there could have been, for example, a person on, a principal on assignment could have stood in until Mr. Berry was ready. From all that I've heard, Mr. Berry is wonderful. I've heard over and over again, my phone has rung off the hook, my email and all of that. I have no doubt in this world that you all love him and that you want him there. I also love fairness and equity. That's all I'm asking you. And thank you for coming. Thank you for all of those that came out tonight to speak from your hearts on behalf of what you think should be right. Next is the approval of action items. I hope I didn't miss anyone. I missed anyone that was on the list, so, okay. The approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to the board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material and have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished or tabled items? Ms. Fisher?
I have none this evening, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, G1, please.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent item with the exception of pulled item G1?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Giovinelli and Ms. Fisher, please record your vote, although mine has gone off. Vote verbally, mine has gone off. Ms. Johnson, would you vote for me, please?
In the affirmative.
In the affirmative, yes. It's unanimous. Oh, it is up there, okay, and it's unanimous vote, seven to zero. Okay, we have one pulled item, which is G1, and I'm confused that Dr. Atkins would read it. Would it be, do you have the information, Dr. Atkins, or do I ask Ms.?
Just motion.
It's her motion, okay. Would you then tell us, explain it, please?
Sure. And I'm very impressed with the school spirit and dedication of all of you from Challenger Middle School that came out here tonight. You have a lot of passion, and I absolutely enjoyed coming to visit your school. As a matter of fact, my granddaughter, who's now a sophomore at North Fort Myers High School, is a graduate from Challenger, and she enjoyed her time and she did really well there. The reason that I pulled this item, actually, what I'm about to say echoes what Chair Giddens said just a little while ago. I'm not going to be commenting on resumes or fitness for a position, but I am going to be expressing here at a board meeting, at an action meeting, my concerns about the way some names were added at the last minute to the principal pool. And I'm going to re-echo again what Ms. Giddens said because it comes down to fairness and equity. A major aspect is the process of succession for school administrators here in Lee County. And it is something that we talked about for a while at the board workshop last week, and I still, I went back and I took a look at several things, and I still have a major concern. So I felt like we couldn't really move on this particular item until I once again expressed my belief. And after that meeting, I had several phone calls from people in the district, and I'm going to kind of summarize in just a minute what I heard from them. Okay, so the principal pool, the final step in the principal pool is that a person's name is listed in the pool after, you know, obviously, the person's been an assistant principal, has leadership certification, et cetera. There are a lot of other things that he or she needs to do, but then finally, there are the interviews, the final piece. And the pool, one of the things that, and I brought this up, and I think there was at least one other board member, but this is something for us to discuss at a later date. I believe there was some desire on the part of the board to formalize the opening and closing of the principal pool and the AP pool as well, because right now, there are no formal post-it dates. In other words, people that are working on certification and getting a master's degree to become an assistant principal or a principal, for planning ahead purposes, you know, I heard of no, and there was nothing in policy, because we did touch on that last week, of particular dates listed, like, here's a date, and by this date, you should have completed this, that, and the other, and we're going to be opening it at that time for interviews, and you should have had all these pieces done in time for the interviews. So what happened was, apparently, because it's, you can't really tell how long a person's been in the pool, because it's just a list of names that are alphabetized. Apparently, the pool opened in the beginning of August, and I assume, I don't know which names were added at the time, but I assume that some names were added in August, August 6th. And then it reopened, and we had some new names added, eight new names added, two of whom are actually on tonight's consent items, that were not on the list when they were first brought up. As a matter of fact, one of them, and I'll just cite this, Mr. Berry's name, was actually going to be brought up on the 27th of August, and it was pulled by the superintendent's office before that occurred. And honestly, at that time, I didn't know why it was pulled, and then I got the information that that name was not listed as part of the principal pool. And since I haven't quite completed my first year on the board, I feel like I've learned a lot, but I really needed to be educated somewhat on exactly the steps, and I did get that education, both from Dr. Pruitt and several of the people that I talked with on the phone on the various steps. And so one of the things I'm saying is that regardless of the character, the background, the wonderful nature of a particular individual, I want to look at fairness and equity. And, you know, some individuals, for whatever reason, have been on this list in the pool for many, many years. That said, that doesn't equal, that doesn't make, because somebody's been on the pool for a decade, that doesn't mean that they're the best candidate, it doesn't mean that, "Hey, it's your turn, you're up," you know, that doesn't, I'm not saying that at all, that equals the best choice. However, that said, I still feel that it's unfair for the pool to, and this is what it looked like to me, to open specifically, to put two names on the pool at the last minute, names that were actually put forward, tapped for principal positions before the time, before they were actually in the pool. I feel like when we do this, it's demoralizing to others who entered the pool in a timely manner. And I said, I have talked to school employees, actually on all levels, and, you know, I said to one person, "Well, if you have a group of people, it behooves you to come here and speak as a group if you feel like it's unfair." And that person said that he did not want to do that because he was afraid to speak. That's what he said, he was afraid to speak. I see that there are individuals that are afraid because they fear retribution, and I'm going to end by saying, those who perpetuate a system that relies on employee submissiveness because they're afraid to speak up, rely on the fact that that fear will keep those who feel discouraged from speaking out. So to me, I just wanted to toss this out to the board for any other comments about the unfairness of handling the principal pool in this manner.
Ms. Vaughn, we need to have a motion on this, so that we can have discussion.
Oh, wait, you told me to speak, so I
No, 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 that's fine. You were telling us what it was that you were pulling. Can you just make
Okay, okay, okay. I was unclear. So then I move that we, I want to further discuss and see what the rest of the board has to say about this and whether the entire board feels that this is a fair way to deal with our employees that have been in these that have been in these pools.
Is there a second?
Well, there wasn't a motion.
Okay. I move...
No, that's superintendent's motion.
Excuse me?
There wasn't a motion yet to either approve or not approve. There's no motions. The comment was, "I would like to have discussion, more discussion." But to have that discussion, you have a motion to approve.
Then I will make that motion.
Motion to approve?
And... Yes, I'll make that motion.
Just for the pulled item, is what we're asking.
Yes, yes, yes.
Make the motion for...
To approve G1 is what you're recommending, and there needs to be a second.
To pull G1?
No.
She's already pulled... It's already been pulled.
We already pulled it, right?
It's been pulled. Now it's for... Now it needs to be...
Motion for discussion.
For approval or whatever motion you want to make, and then you go for a second. Then you have whatever discussion you need.
My motion then would be, first of all, my... All right, wipe that out. My motion would be to separate the parts of G1. Separate out the administrative portion for further consideration by the board, possibly actually tabling it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fisher, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Fisher, would you like to start?
No, I have no discussion. I'm just seconding it for a discussion.
Ms. Vannelli in the discussion?
Well, my concern is the other applicants or personnel. So what... Are we just separating out the administrative personnel only?
That's...
So I mean, it's going to define what you're...
Yeah, what I'd like to define is separating out from... The motion is to separate out the one, the administrative portion.
But, okay, but on that is Dr. Bohatch, and I think that there... I mean, his resignation and there's a transfer.
So I'm going to need advisement from the board attorney on...
And then there's Mr. Mangan's principal assignment, which I would not want to hold that up. So that's my... That would be some questions that I have. I support us digging a little deeper in the process and the policy on the principal pool, because I do too also believe in fair and equitable. And I received many phone calls, and that was their biggest concern, is that there was a lot of others that had been in the pool for quite some time. And to just open the pool up and put someone new in there, that's... How is that... What is that going to do for the morale of the district? And what example does that set for us and for others? The opportunity they might... They told me, "Why bother? Why bother putting their name in?" Because if policy and procedure and protocol doesn't matter, then why bother? That was really very concerned over that. And very... They felt that it was... It really let them down. So that's what I have.
Hold on one second. Ms. Patrica, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to weigh in?
I think we need to make a clear motion here, and if Ms. Vaughn will indulge me for a minute, I would like to move that we approve G1 as presented with specific regard to tech support recommendations, certificated personnel recommendations, and administrative personnel recommendations, except Dana Berry. Is there a second?
Second.
So you're separating out Dana Berry's discussion for the moment? You're not taking any action, you're just separating it?
I'm separating it. Now I'm going to make a second motion to approve the recommendation.
Well, wait. Let's do first things... First motion first, and then we'll figure that out.
So the first...
So there's a motion to approve G1 with the exception of the one position. And that stays... That stays... We'll have to address that after you handle this motion.
I can... I'm... I will second Ms. Patrica's motion and withdraw mine.
I already seconded. So it's up there. So do we need discussion on that?
But thank you. You clarified that you drew the initial motion that was on the floor.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's been substituted with this... With Ms. Patrica's motion.
Yes, she did a much clearer job with it than I did.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, are you with us? I...
I second... No, I second it.
She did.
I did. I second it.
Okay. And now we have... Her motion has been removed from the floor. Ms. Patrica's has gone on. It's been moved and seconded. Now discussion on Ms. Patrica's motion that's on the floor. Let's start this in. Ms. Morgan?
I support it.
You support her motion? Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
We're supporting separating, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Comments or suggestions? We're not voting. I'm just asking if you have discussion.
Absolutely, I support it.
Okay?
I support the motion.
I support it as well.
Okay. So now, where does that...
Call the motion. You can call it, yeah. You can call it for vote.
Call the vote.
Oh, okay. Just call for the vote. So do I need to repeat it? I think everybody knows what the motion is, to just subtract the one name from the rest of the list. All those in favor, so we do a verbal since we don't go on. All those in favor of Ms. Patrica's motion, please signify by.
Aye.
So it's passed? All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make another motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Approve the superintendent's recommendation to promote Dana Berry from Challenger Middle School Assistant Principal to Principal.
Can I second?
Okay, motion's made and seconded.
Okay, and...
Discussion.
Now, I have a question. The other things will be approved when we...
Is were approved.
Okay, all right. All right. So it's been moved by Ms. Patrica and seconded by Ms. Morgan to approve the item that was...
The recommendation by the superintendent.
Of the recommendation from the superintendent to promote Mr. Berry. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Comments, discussion on that? Yes, ma'am.
So in order for us to not approve a recommendation of the superintendent, we need good cause.
That is correct.
And so then, will you...
Has to be legal good cause for denying the recommendation.
Right, and would you please define that for us?
It has to be a basis other than just a question about an item or a question about a policy. The policy, as I understand it, has been followed as it exists today. So that's... If you have an issue with the policy, then the way to address that is to correct it for the next time around, the next cycle, but not necessarily at this point in time. If, in fact, the recommendation stands and the superintendent stands by his recommendation, then you need good cause. Which means you have to have a legal reason, a legal basis for why you would determine that this person should not be qualified. And it's qualification that he meets qualifications to handle the position.
Right. So then, in personnel recommendations, good cause is?
That you have to have good causes.
That they don't meet the qualifications.
That they don't meet the qualifications, or there's some other justification for...
Their character or...
Why the person would not be sufficient for that position. Policy... The policy would not be the issue at the moment because the policy's not in question. That's the problem that we're talking about and having some issues with.
Thank you. Ms. Jevon, now?
I prefer to wait, and I want to hear what others have to say.
Ms. Jevon?
I would definitely go with the recommendation of the superintendent on this because I feel that... I personally don't know what the best fit is for that school, where I believe that others would have that. And as far as, I don't necessarily think... And I really appreciate everyone that is on the pool. However, I don't know if... How many did apply for that position?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you. And if they are the best suited for that. And I just know that in my practice of hiring, I always want to make sure that I'm hiring the best suited for what our needs are at that time.
Ms. Morgan?
Superintendent's made his recommendation. I think it's a good recommendation, and I support it.
Ms. Patrica?
Madam Chair, if I may ask, could we hear from the superintendent regarding the reasons why he made this recommendation, and also an explanation of the process document that we all received before I give my comments? Because those will shape my comments.
Okay. And let me go back to Ms. Vaughn first before the superintendent. Any further...
I'd like to hear what Dr. Atkins has to say as well.
Dr. Atkins, please.
Well, I certainly appreciate what the board has said regarding what's equitable. I think that in making this decision, you know, we also have to think about what's equitable for the children. And, you know, this... Principles are always difficult decisions, and I believe in this case that the best candidate came forward. We have a very rigorous process. It takes a lot to get through that process. He emerged as one of the top finalists, and then he came through the finalist process with flying colors. He has the support of his staff. He has the support of his former principal. And I have to tell you, you know, the staff went over and above to make sure this was the right fit. We... I pulled the item because I understood the questions, and I wanted to try my best to answer board member questions. And then we took the extra steps to survey the staff, to go out to the school site and talk to staff individually and/or as a group solicit input. And we received really, I think, overwhelming feedback that really confirmed the original recommendation. I have made recommendations before of candidates that were not in the principal pool, and some of them have been highly successful. You know, one of our best right now did not come through the pool, and that's Kelly Stedman. That's just the most recent example of an appointment I made for what was, I felt, was in the best interest of students, and I think that community members would understand that. That's why sometimes we can't let process get in the way of what's best for children. And I'm sorry, and I, you know, that some people don't feel that way, and I do think it's important to have a pool. However, in the case like we see right here, we have to, at the end of the day, select the best candidate, and in my opinion, that candidate is Dana Berry. I will say that in addition to that, you know, we've had precedent, but then since we took that additional two weeks, they did, you know, open the pool. And I would, just because the questions have been asked about the pool, I would ask, you know, Dr. Pruitt, if she could come forward and maybe address those concerns. You know, one of the things about the pool process is it does take a lot of time and effort to go through, and I think HR team does a great job. In this case, Mr. Berry had crossed, you know, every one of the... Checked every one of those boxes with the exception of the last. And now he has done that. So the last... The pool, Madam Chair, just to make sure that the pool that you read is not the most up-to-date pool, so, you know...
No, I know. I read the one that was up-to-date at the time of the interviews.
So again, you know, that two weeks allowed for that final box to be checked. But regardless of the box or not, you know, I feel my job is to recommend who I feel is the best candidate for the students, staff, and that community, and that's what I've done in this case. He's also, lastly, just met the requirements, the statutory requirements, the requirements of the state of Florida for this position, which he would have to do in order to take it.
Yeah, he met the statutory requirements the first time that you were going to bring the name forward. So there was no special thing done to open the principal pool. The folks work together in cohorts. They go through the NISL and through the other training in cohorts. And as I shared with you at the board briefing, is that we don't... There's not a dedicated staff member to manage the principal and AP pool. So I love some of the suggestions that you guys have given, and if we have the resources to do it, I'm happy to implement it. So we fit in the assessment for each cohort group when the schedule allows, when we can get people here, when our schedules are free, because there is not a dedicated resource. This cohort was due for the next step in their process. Actually, it should have been done, as Dr. Atkins reminded me. If I was following, you know, the normal timeline, it would have been done even before the first recommendation came forward. So that, you know, that's how it occurred. And I just have to say to you that in... This is my sixth year doing this position, and I have never, at least not since I left Trafalgar, have I seen this type of support for a candidate to take over a principalship of a school. And I think several of these staff members very proudly got up here and made the point that we need to be focused on what's best for children, and what's best for children is a happy staff. And a happy staff, you know, there's... I counted, over 50% of the staff is here, and that's incredible. So this is all about what's best for the children of Challenger Middle School, and I'm very confident and comfortable with the recommendation.
Can I... Before you leave, I was... I did talk to some of the people that were in the cohort, and originally, they were told a different timeline. That was to turn in their portfolio, and that the next process would begin probably in January or February.
That I would disagree with what you were told.
Okay, and I guess...
Madam Chair, I'd like to call the question. Everybody at this stage has had an opportunity to present an opinion. The superintendent has presented his opinion. We are talking about matters that have nothing to do with the recommendation.
No, but it does have to do with it. It does have to do with it. One last question I have is, would you do the same steps and go through the same process for other people that are in the pool? And it's rhetorical. Ms. Patrica, you haven't had a chance to weigh in. Would you like to?
That's right.
Let me take that. Yes. You all know from our time together during Master Board Training that I am a rule follower, and so my comments might seem a little out of character. But I do have to say that we do not want our processes to be so prescriptive that we're forced to skip over a person that is the best fit for a school and who will serve the needs of our students, our staff, and our families in a specific building. The human element of talent management really can't always be written down in a neat policy, and that's why we have people. In this case, Dr. Atkins and Dr. Pruitt and her team have brought forward the person they believe is the best under these circumstances. Madam Chair, I was really, really impressed by the list of names that you read, because that tells me that the future principals in our schools or our schools are in really good hands in the future, because that was a really strong list. And I'm 100% confident that when the right opening comes up for each and every one of those people, they too will be placed in a school. And it seems to me that fairness and equity are absolutely... You're right, absolutely the most important thing. And here, it's fairness and equity for the students and the staff and the families at Challenger Middle, and for those reasons, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
For the vote? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I wanted to come back after the superintendent.
I did tell you that. Go ahead, yes.
Yeah. I find it really ironic to hear both Dr. Atkins say, "We can't let process get in the way," but especially from Board Member Patrica to say that after so many times that Board Member Patrica has sat next to me and called me on minutia of process.
I think Mrs. Vaughn called the question. Please. Can we finish this first? We did have a call for the question on the floor.
Yeah. I thought I had the floor. Remember, you asked me, and then...
But that's not the issue. But then she called for... She called for the vote. Attorney, can you weigh in on this?
You asked her to go ahead and give her comments as to what the motion was. She's attempted to do that, but she did go a little bit beyond some of what the direction was. So if you... My suggestion would be if the school board member would like to focus on what the motion is only and address it that way, then you take her comments and then call the question.
Okay. Process has not been served with this. That said, I am a huge believer in teacher input. That said, I am a huge believer in teacher input in schools. Absolutely, I've advocated for that for a long time. So I'm going to trust that everything that we have learned, everything that HR has learned about, about this candidate's background and resume, et cetera, is correct, and I certainly will support what the teachers want.
Okay.
That's it.
Call for the question. All of those in favor of the motion to...
Approve the recommendation of the superintendent.
Approve the recommendation of the superintendent, and this is a verbal?
Yes.
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 Please show hands and verbally.
Aye.
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 So we have six to one.
Six to one.
So it's approved.
Okay, thank you. You can wave silently. Okay. And Mr. Barry, I'm sure will do a wonderful job, and I appreciate all of you being here.
Madam Chair, if you, if you don't mind, if I could recognize some of the other candidates?
Yes.
Dana Philpott, Allen Park Elementary, from Specialist Reading to Assistant Principal. Michael Gatewood, Compensation Labor Relations Coordinator to Financial Services. And then, of course, Dana Barry, Principal.
Okay. And again, thank you to everyone for showing up tonight. I think we've covered everything correct. We're down to the consent proclamations. Don't think I've left out anything. So included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are the resolutions proclaiming September 2019 as Do the Right Thing Month. October 1st through the 15th in 2019 is Disability History and Awareness Weeks. October 2019, National Bullying Prevention Month, as well as October 2019 is National Italian American Heritage Month. We'll take a brief pause while everyone leaves. Can leave quickly?
Sorry, that's my humble advice.
Okay, let's move on to Attorney's Recommendations, and I believe you have a RSM.
This was the recommendation of, to approve the statement of work item number two and increase the expenditures between the School Board of Lee County and RSM US LLP. If you would like, I can read in more details if you like.
Now, this is the RSM, no.
Yeah, this is the RSM, to provide internal audits and assistance with ethics and whistleblower policy, facility construction, purchasing and procurement compliance, and human resources, recruitment, and onboarding to comply with Section 100.01.42, Pren 1 Florida statutes in an amount not to exceed $190,000.
Is your motion to approve?
Moved second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Gievenelli. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not certain that what we've approved is what we actually talked about in our workshop, but I'm perfectly willing to let it go, because I think these are what they would call Scrivener's errors. But the fact of the matter is, we had talked about taking out certain pieces of this and also reordering the timeline, and those things don't appear in this particular contract.
We will add to the supporting documents, the most recent contract.
Iteration? That's fine. I just wanted to point out that what we...
Right, because I know we did...
Not what we discussed.
Right. This is, I think, a kind of condensing it, and we will, Susan, if we can...
It's not condensing it. It is, it does not say what we agreed, if you're going to provide another iteration of the document, that's fine, and I don't intend to hold it up. I just want to say that I think this was brought forward without, you know, the eyes on it that needed to be on it before it was presented.
We'll, we'll take a further look at it and make sure that it's compliant with what the discussion was.
That's all I'm asking.
Right, and that had to be done anyway once, before it's signed, so, okay? Are we all right with that? Okay, any other discussion on it? And just for public's purposes, this is, RSM is our board auditors, and this is a process, one which will include a whistleblower and ethics policy and a ethics line, hotline for employees that will be worked initially set up with RSM, the auditors, and with our board attorney to make sure we are following all the procedures and protocols. And then they also will be doing audits in the areas that are listed in the document, and we will have the final document online as a part of our resources as well. Any other discussion on this? Ms. Patrica, any other, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that I support RSM in this contract, and I'm excited about them to get started, so I just wanted to add to that.
Okay, Ms. Patrica, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. There was discussion. No further comment, please record your vote. And it, Ms. Fisher abstained?
Aye.
What's your vote? Are you a four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. Oh, no, there, Ms. Patrica was nay. There's one no.
It didn't come up.
Needs to show as being approved, 7-0.
And Ms. Fisher was up.
You want, everyone should vote again?
Yeah, you can vote.
Please, please revote.
Okay. Everyone?
Everyone, please revote.
Okay.
Thank you.
The record can be corrected.
Ms. Patrica, did you hear your revote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And it is six to one. Ms. Patrica, would you like to say, voice why you would say nay, just for the record?
I expressed my concern last week during our, I think it was our workshop. I just don't feel like I have enough information in front of me right now to vote yes.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity. Thank you. Okay, we move on to Board Member Comments. Ms. Patrica, since you've been so nice and kind and had not here to see all the excitement, would you like to go first?
Thank you. Just a quick update on the conference. We met with NSBA staff today to get us up to speed on some of the important federal issues. They also helped us better understand the political climate. Later, we had a meeting with Secretary DeVos and Assistant Secretary Brogan, and we talked about relief from natural disasters as it relates specifically to schools, students, and educational facilities, with the understanding of the unique role that schools play in a natural disaster, and the importance of getting schools opened as quickly as possible so that communities can return to a sense of normalcy. We talked about teacher shortages, which is likely going to be a huge issue for the NSBA next year, which I think, you know, it's obviously an issue for us, it's an issue across the country. Finally, we talked about school safety with them. The rest of the FSBA group headed to Senator Scott's office, and I headed back here so that I could attend this meeting. Tomorrow, we have about a dozen meetings set up with congressmen and agency leaders. I have some fantastic information to share with Congressman Rooney about FEMA. Susan Millay put together a very thorough analysis of that for me. And in addition, the E-rate issue is kind of like my assigned issue when we speak with the congressman and the agency leaders. And Trey Davis provided me with some information today, and he gave all of the credit to the rock star member of his staff, Darrell Eldon, who I guess had the information I needed right at his fingertips. So I'm happy to be here. The group of people I'm working with here at FSBA are phenomenal, very dedicated, very passionate, and those are my comments.
Morgan, would you like to go next?
Oh, sure. First of all, I want...
Excuse me, would you turn your mic off?
I wanted to thank, he's already left, Jimmy Fisher. I think it is extraordinary when somebody comes from out of town to testify as to the character of someone who's being put forward for a principalship. So I, I just wanted to say thank you. My apologies to Ms. Patrica for cutting you out of the conversation. Without you here, I forget that you're up there. I am concerned about the RSM contract. I mean, I, I just think it's, it's careless that we bring something forward that we've discussed, we've discussed at length, and it doesn't represent exactly what it was that we agreed to. But I will not belabor that point. I, I would like to make a point about the meeting tonight, since we don't do a plus delta. I think if, as board members, we're going to pool things, and there is a lack of clarity about what it is we're attempting to do, it is incumbent on us to talk with the board attorney to make certain that we know exactly what it is that we need to do under Robert's Rules of Orders to proceed in a way that doesn't look like, you know, we don't know what we're doing up here. So I'm just suggesting that in the future, when we have pools like G1, that people who are making the pools and people who intend to speak or make amendments, make certain they speak with the board attorney first. He will not be telling anybody else on the board what's coming, but I think his advice would be well, well taken. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Very much. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I am the School District Liaison to the Complete Count Committee for, for Lee County. And you're going to start seeing, well, I won't characterize it as a barrage, but we will be putting out more and more information about the census, both from the school district and various entities throughout Lee County. I met this morning with a group from Complete Count, and we have representatives from nonprofits, the faith community, Lee Health, Healthy Lee, lots and lots of different areas. Now, why is this so important? I won't go into too much, but this is where our funding comes from in this, in the state, our federal funding, and this is also how we add to our voice in, in Congress, how we add perhaps another state legislator. In 2010, the last time that we had a census, Floridians left almost $178 billion on the table. This is over 10 years. It's, it's the 10-year period. With only 74%, that was, that was how many were counted back then. And I've seen two different figures. This flyer that I have says $946. I've seen some that say that that figure's over $1,000. We did gain two House seats, okay, in the House of Representatives. So that's one of the huge things. Now, I'm also liaison to our Head Start Policy Council, and I was there, oh, about a week and a half ago, and heard a lot of reports from the, the moms and, and the, the members, well, actually, there was a dad, too, the parents that showed up. And some of them, there was one lady in tears because her baby was going to go to school for the first time, but there were lots of raves and, and how wonderful it was because they had had a child already go through Head Start, and that child was doing really, really well in kindergarten, which of course, this segues also into our idea that we've talked about on the board about preschool and having early childhood education for, well, it would be nice if we could have it for all. Why do I bring it up in conjunction with the census? Where do we get our money for Head Start and early Head Start? From the federal government. What happens if we have an undercount here in Lee County? That's just one of the many programs that benefit the schools and, and the school district. So there'll be more information forthcoming, but hopefully, we can get the word out so that the people, the hardest people to count are the little ones. That was a huge part of the undercount in, in the last census, counting, if there's a baby born on April 1st, that baby is part of the census. So that's all I need, I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Okay. Well, I truly want to make sure that we reach out to Ms. Susan and Ms. Carmen regarding their children with the special needs, because that is very dear, near to my heart, and I want to make sure that we do everything possible to assist these parents. Now, on a positive note, I am proud to share that our, our schools, North Row Myers High School and Cypress Lake High, are two of 21 schools in Florida and only 173 in the entire U.S. who have been named as the 2018, 2019 National Banner Unified Champions Schools through Special Olympics. And I think that's amazing that we have them here in our district. Also, just a little tidbit of what we've done so far, we had our first EDAC meeting. We elected our chair, our vice chair. The committee is a newly formed committee, a lot, a lot of new people, and they are just ready and excited to get to work. We held our first community forum for the year in conjunction with the NAACP, and that was held at Franklin Park. We had a very nice turnout. We spoke to them about the rebuild of Franklin Park, academics. Dr. Atkins, he answered a lot of questions, so, and we have everyone's email, so we'll be able to keep them informed of what has taken place. We also have our new and exciting Diversity and Inclusion Newsletter that we started. Well, I didn't start it, they started it. And then I also had the opportunity, and Ms. Gittens also was there, we were at the Active Threat Seminar this Saturday, and, you know, we watched and observed what parents are seeing for the first time of what their children are going through in the schools. And when you look at it, it's, it's just a different world. But we have to do that, and we're really, you know, in tune with the safety and making sure that our kids are safe. That's number one. And then also, I have a full schedule of visiting all the schools again and working with Success Academy to find speakers and mentors for our students as part of our strategic plan. And last but not least, it is National Cherries Jubilee Day and National Voters Registration Day, just in case you want to know. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gievenelli?
Yes. I was lucky enough to attend the Law and Order Ball, where our own Deputy Donna from Buckingham Exceptional School was actually the recipient and award winner that evening. And I couldn't have been more excited, the fact that someone from our schools, you know, was at, the SRO from one of our schools was actually a winner this year. So that was very exciting, and it was more exciting to see that she had no idea. She was very surprised, and that was actually even more heartwarming, the fact that that she just didn't expect it. My husband actually was lucky enough to have worked with her in the past, so he was very excited as well for her and insisted on me meeting her and everything, so that was, I was kind of honored in that. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are, that's how great Lee County really is, the fact that we have our own, you know, winner of the, of the year, you know, is just exciting. I can't even... The kids are very lucky to have her, and we got to see, just had a little clip of what she does, and she started a food pantry there at the Exceptional Center, and that's actually, like, taken off unbelievable. So that, you know, she recognized the need, and she made the changes, and that's awesome. I want to say, I wasn't able to say goodbye to Dr. Bohatch, so I want him to know that we will miss him, and I wish him well in his future endeavors. I also want to echo what you said about the census. 2020 does count, and I wanted to tell that, you know, each, each person, you count. So in more ways than one, funding, and actually, I believe that redistricting may be affected by that, and I think that is probably very important for Lee County. And so I hope, and I want to encourage everyone to make sure that they're counted, including their children, and no matter what, they're, nothing's going to happen to them by us, you know, in helping the census get, having the head count. So I also want to, we actually started, we had our meeting for construction advisory, and we're excited for the, getting to discuss the new schools that's going to be built and the ones that are coming up. MMM will have a groundbreaking, I think it's November 13th. So that will be right around the corner for all of us. That will, that is exciting, I have to admit, when I never had that, had done that before, except for Bonita Springs, and that was an exciting day. So I look forward to that as well. And I went to a cyberbullying event, and I'm going to put that in my monthly newsletter, some little, for some information that was given to me that I thought was really beneficial for our students and families to know. So I'll have that out in the next newsletter, because I have the month of October. So that's something that I'm excited about. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher? Yes, thank you. So first, I want to thank the a cappella group from Cypress Lake Performing Arts Center for starting off our meeting with a great deal of joy this evening. I was very heartened to see the staff from Challenger coming and advocating for their leadership. I think it's a great idea that staff has input in choosing their leadership, and I hope that'll become part of the process from now on at all schools, because I think that that really, really will determine the success of that tenure. Tomorrow is Dads Take Your Kids to School Day. So dads, listening audience, get up early and take your kids to school, make them feel special. On October the 5th, at Centennial Park at 6:00 p.m., the Coalition for Drug-Free Southwest Florida will be having their prevention run, and I'm hoping that our district will have the biggest team again this year. I'll be there. Will you?
I'll check.[1354.01][1354.01][laughter]
And the rest of you out there, too.
I can't remember if I registered or not, sorry.
And if you register quickly, you'll get a free shirt. They still have a few left. So I want to thank my colleagues on the board for a productive meeting yesterday in Collier County for our master board training segment. And, and I want to thank all of our staff for all of the hard work that they do every day. I want to thank our students and our community members who support us to make this district the great one that it is. That's all I have this evening. Okay. One of the good things about being last is that everyone has thanked everyone that I wanted to thank, so ditto to all of the thank yous and the places that we were together and all out in the community. I did have an opportunity to speak to a group of college students at FSW. I was invited to speak at Ms. Delgado's Diversity and Equity class. We've got a bright future ahead. There's a lot of young people out there that are anxious and eager to get out here and tell us how to do this thing right. So they're working on getting ready to come out and take over from us. Do the right thing. If you, if you are having a sad day and you look on the calendar and see that Do the Right Thing is having their meeting this month, you know, that particular day, they meet once a month, just come in the auditorium here. It is unbelievable. I walked in, there's all these little smiling faces with their trophies, and the top winners were sitting, when I came in, the door over there, they were sitting up here on the dais. And so as I was speaking, I said, "Now, who is that sitting in my chair?" And he just kind of went down like this to hide. But it's a very rewarding thing to watch. We have a lot of students that are doing the right thing, and as the scripture says, "Train up a child," and they will do that for the rest of their life. It really teaches them to think about others first instead of themselves. Our DAC committee, we had executive meeting yesterday. I just want to put in a plug for DAC, District Advisory Council, and the processes that we meet here with two representatives from each school and talk about issues that then are taken back to the schools for their school advisory council. And I brought up a suggestion at our executive meeting, and I wanted to share it with the rest of the board members, that from time to time, if there are DAC representatives that are having trouble, for one thing, getting people to come or, you know, with their meetings, and they requested it, if other board members, if it's in your area and we tell you about it, would you be interested in possibly attending the SAC meeting? It's a way for us to get out there, not that we're going out as the experts to answer all the questions, but just to show the support and to help them boost their numbers if possible. So that's something that I will bring up, but I did want to bring forward and see, if I see heads nodding, then I'll bring it up again. And thank you all for, staff for being here, and folks in the audience, we really appreciate you. And again, go home and hug someone tonight. Just be sure of it. Dr. Atkins, no, attorney first.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, board members, you have an executive session to discuss state of security that's scheduled for Monday, October 7th, between 2:30 and 4:30 p.m. We'd also like to schedule two cases, two litigation cases that are pending. One is regarding the House Bill 7069 appeal. That is case number 1D182040, which includes the School Board of Lee County as an appellant and across Appley in this case. I have that as an executive session for discussion purposes. Also, case Lori Alice Giordano as the personal representative of the estate of Zachary Martin Polsonberg versus the School Board. That's claim 79877. That's in U.S. District Court, Middle District. Have, have those two cases and have the opportunity to have that executive session with you as well.
Are those closed shade sessions?
Yes, ma'am.
And they already are on the calendar?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything, anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Superintendent?
Just first of all, I just want to thank board members that did attend the NAACP banquet. I think that was a really good event, and, and one of the things that, you know, Dr. Martin is always a wonderful speaker, and some of the things that he spoke about in terms of some of his recommendations, I think, are aligned with our strategic plan. And one of them that was mentioned tonight was pre-K, and, you know, I really hope that we can, as a team, tackle that issue. You know, I feel really good about some of the other things that we've got going on with our strategic plan, but that's one that, that I really feel that I could use, you know, board support. And what I mean by that is whole team out in the community helping us get some movement on that particular issue. You saw what our pre, you know, our kindergarten readiness is, and I think that it's something that I would like to see us take on as a group.
Will you provide talking points for us?
Absolutely. We'll be happy to do that. And then, you know, last thing, Ms. Gittens, I think, on behalf of all of us, just sorry for your loss, and, you know, we're a family, and whenever a family member's hurting, we're hurting, so our condolences, and that's all.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we just ask to keep the family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
And I believe that brings us to, on Thursday, October 3rd, we'll be board meeting workshop at 9:00 a.m., as well as a board briefing meeting at 1:00. And those of you that are out there in TV and YouTube land, if you're ever, you know, bored and wondering what we do, just tune us in. We're always out there 24/7 on YouTube to see what's happening in your district, your school district. At this point, having no other business to come before the body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some...
Okay. Together. Just to, okay, Mr. Gievenelli's second, Ms. Fisher's first. And thank you very much. Good night, everyone.